This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, welcome everyone. Mike, can you join us please? So we can have our... Okay, never mind. Okay. Welcome everyone. We are at a May 1st, 2024, special meeting for our Budget Workshop number one. This is a meeting of the Heber City Council. It is now 6:05 PM. And the members that are in attendance... So the council members that are in attendance are Scott Phillips, Sid Ostergaard, Aaron Shewood, and myself, Mayor Heidi Franco. We'll be expecting our other... There we go. Mike Johnston is just joining us and we'll see when our final council member joins us. Okay, everyone, just to be on the safe side per state code, it's not listed in the agenda to... Since 1952, across our country. And I hope that all will read that proclamation and consider to pray for peace in the world and for help for our nation. We're going to go into our workshop item. And that is now a review of the fiscal year 2024-2025 Budget Workshop. And I will turn this over to Sarah Nega, our Finance Manager.
Mayor and Council, thank you. Can everyone hear me okay with this microphone? Thank you. Welcome to Budget Workshop number one. Before we dive in, I wanted to do a couple of housekeeping items. First and most importantly is introduce you to your new building official, Kurt Davis. Kurt, would you mind just taking a moment and introduce yourself to the council? That'd be awesome.
I'm Kurt Davis. I grew up in this valley. My home construction is valley. Orham City for 17 years and then also at Summit County for three years. And then now I'm here. But this is my home and now the commute's a lot better.
Kurt, thank you. We enjoy adding all-stars to our team and we believe that Kurt is another all-star who's going to hit a lot of home runs for us. As we dive into the Budget Workshop number one, I'm going to do a lot of the play-by-play. Sarah is going to do a lot of the color commentary. We've got a lot to present to you. Because of the two freshman council members, we are going to maybe do a little bit lower pass-through than we normally would. But if you feel we're being too redundant and want us to gain some altitude, let us know and we can moderate the presentation so it meets everyone's needs. So let's go ahead and dive into the budget. Members of the audience, we do have a floating mic if you do choose to speak. Go ahead and use that floating mic. We wanted this to be a little bit more informal, so go ahead and grab that and just pass it around as you need to do so. So let's go ahead and dive in. It's important to, first of all, thank everyone that was involved. This is the, not only the largest, but the most important policy document that you will evaluate and approve on an annual basis. And this is a Herculean task. This started literally back in December and we just finished this literally late last week. And so it's taken a number of months to get there. But a lot of hands, a lot of heads are involved in this. And so I want to give a special thanks to department directors. Thanks to their support staff. We could not have done it without them. And of course, those a bit closer to the project. Sarah Nega, Sri Ash, Wendy Anderson, and Lindsay Solzer. Again, a lot of hands, a lot of heads involved in this. And I'm thankful to each and every one that has had a role in this, in this process and this budget. Our overview is going to include three parts. The first part is going to be a broad overview, kind of setting the foundation for what we did and why we did it. The second part is a summary of funds. A local government's use what's called fund accounting, which means we have funds we utilize to carry out the business of the city. And we're going to walk you through all 26, I think it's 26 of those funds. And then lastly, end up with the capital improvement program. So let's kick it off with Budget Overview, Part One. It's important that I set the stage and let you know that there were a number of key budget drivers. The first and foremost was council strategic budget and policy priorities. And I have taken the liberty to provide you an updated copy as of today. Again, these are your budget policy priorities. I've updated this and so you can refer back to this. To that section of the discussion that talks about your priorities. We also utilize a zero-based budget. Unlike most governments, they essentially will use incremental budgeting, where they simply increase your budget by 2%, 3%, or 5% and don't ask many questions beyond that. We ask our departments to submit a zero-based budget, which is built around that year's needs. I also want you to know that we have a balanced budget. State law requires me to submit you a balanced budget and you have a balanced budget in front of you. Thirdly, we're going to talk tonight about utility rate analysis for the four enterprise funds. We're going to talk to you about a business license fee study update. And we're also going to share with you some economic trends that really guided our assumptions when building general fund revenues and citywide revenue overall. So I want to do is allow Sarah to come and talk to you about ClearGov. This is also one of those major budget drivers. We have literally evolved away a bit from Excel-intensive spreadsheets and we're now using ClearGov. But I've asked Sarah to talk a bit about this powerful tool that you're going to be able to use.
So historically, we have utilized spreadsheets and Word to generate our budget book. When I got here, there were kind of five things I wanted to do better. One is communication between department managers and the finance and mat. Two is accuracy between the three major budget functions: payroll, operating, and capital. Three, consistency among reports. Like just what does it look like? The naming conventions, the column sizes, the images we use. Four is record-keeping. When we get six months into our budget, does anybody remember why we made the decisions we did? And then five is public engagement. As far as I know, we get the budget book prepared. We stick it on our website and I think it collects dust. I don't even know who looks at that anymore. So those were the five things that I wanted to improve on. So last year, city council approved our contract with ClearGov. And we spent the last several months, we've been training, we've been building models, we've been building reports. The department staff, department managers and staff have been super patient. This has not been an easy lift and a lot of pain points. And they've been really great. It has been a bit painful, but we have... We've birthed a baby. We have something to show you. So I'm gonna get out of this. So this is now our digital budget book. This is not 100% done, but this is what, this is what now the public will use as the budget book. It's no longer a PDF on the website. It's an actual interactive thing. So we're just going to go through. So introduction. You can have, if you want to look at the history of the city, if you want to look at demographics. I will say, this is demographics. These are automated from the 2020 census. I don't feel like they're super accurate, but we can update it. We can fix it, right? So... Right? Yeah. So then you're going to see already, like, I think they project our growth rate dipping right there. That's not, that clearly is not accurate. But I wanted to, I wanted to show you, demonstrate to you what it will look like when it's populated with the right numbers. That's what they're pulling. I don't know why it's not correct. But we can, we can put data in that is more accurate. We can, it's not fixed. So I want to show you that this little blurb here, I didn't write a word of it. It's all AI. I actually couldn't even tell you what it said. I generated it like five minutes ago. So you can edit it, but there's a lot of AI working already that makes, that gets you 90% of the way there, right? So the numbers are correct, but maybe you would want to add different commentary, different narrative. There are some graphs. There's as many graphs as you want. These numbers are correct. This is just a snapshot, revenues, expenditures, but then it digs down into the details of revenues, blah, blah, blah. Details of expenditures, again, AI-generated narratives that get you 90% of the way there and then you can fill in what you feel like it's missing. If someone's looking at that and they'd rather see a bar chart, they can click on this bar chart. I couldn't even tell you what this graph says right now because I just added it like two minutes ago. And then there is, what is this saying? Oh, this is the percentage. So there's the salaries, operating changes, da-da-da. And then there's like a little, another AI-generated blurb about fund balance. So that's just a little snapshot of a fund. You can go into the departments. We can pick on the administrative department. This is my department. And again, salaries, benefits. This is gonna, this should look very similar to historical budget books. Yes, that might be a different function. So I wasn't going to talk about it tonight, but there is a transparency function to ClearGov as well. Your budget book really gets locked down when it's adopted and it's static. You don't want to change that again. But there are other mechanisms of showing that kind of real-time data to the public in transparency, not the budget. Super basic, but it should look very familiar. This is a standard across, across all municipalities, this kind of format. Good question. I have built a personnel, or a, yeah, personnel model. And so with HR, we call the department heads. It's, I won't take the time to show you, but... No, they are not hardcoded in there. They're generated by a model. The model, we put in the salary and then we just push a lot of buttons saying, "We want to add this COLA, this merit, this holiday pay, da-da-da-da-da." It generates it into an import file and then we just import it into our operating budget. And you can do many scenarios. Hey, I want to look at, what if we did a 5%? What if we did a 3%? What if insurance goes up 20%? Oh, insurance is only going to go 4. You just generate a different scenario. Then you pick the scenario that you feel is the right one and you import it into the, into the budget book. Okay, and then debt. This is just kind of a snapshot here. Oops. Let's go to debt. Debt. Right now, this is just showing just really the debt service fund. There's lots of funds that transfer money into the debt service fund. So this is a culmination of government debt, of general fund. And then here's all the enterprise funds. So here's the, the full debt service that the culinary water fund has to pay each year. The mayor asked earlier if we could actually break out, like, but what is all of our debt? And I'm sure there's a way to do that. It just isn't shown. And then our capital, this one's kind of cool. We're going to pick on, let's see. One path that I was going to show. Oh, yeah, Muirfield Park. So it shows you the total, this is citywide. But if you scroll down, let's, it's, it is separated into, not the same historically as you've seen. Mostly it's by who's requesting it a little bit. So like the engineering, they're like 90% of our CIP, right? All of the projects they have, road projects, sewer projects. So I'm going to scroll down to... But you can, these are just like snapshots, right? But you can click in and you can see those traditional CIP. Request sheets? You saw your budget book, print them out or even clean up. It was like 400 pages. Those pages are still here, but you can just click on the ones you want to see. So here's Muirfield Park expansion. You have a description, you have a picture. But you also have this little map. And then you can like zoom in and see exactly where this whole place is. I can see it's right, right there. I wish you could click on it and it would turn up. I hope so, yeah. There, there's some fine-tuning for sure. Like this thing right here, construction maintenance fund one. What does that mean? That's work that I have to do on my end, some cleanup work. That is it. That is our budget, that's our digital budget book that will be published as soon as we, as soon as you all decide to adopt.
Process we have been using, which is an Excel-intensive process, is a process I began using in 1997 when I started my career. And so we are now getting into the 21st century, finally, getting this budget done. So it's good. Sarah, thank you for that. Appreciate it. So we mentioned earlier that one of the chief budget drivers is council's budget policy priorities. So I want to take a minute and share with you how we've incorporated your priorities into the budget. Because this is the most important priority that we have is making sure this budget is driven. So again, your priorities are included in front of you if you want more detail. Let me just walk you right through this. The first one is the 2034 Olympic Focus. Of course, this is an ongoing. There's no specific outlay that we identified, but it's certainly ongoing. Number two is the envisioned Central Heber 2050 execution phase. And item number two and three are actually combined here. And we've got a number of projects to begin executing on the Central Heber vision. First, of course, is the 200 South Bandshell, whose groundbreaking we had this past week. We've got $3.5 million to complete the bandshell as well as a transformation of Second South into a festival street. We've also got, let's see here, we got the street cross-section for 100 West. This was a priority of council. We got $261,000 for the engineering and planning. We've also got a parking plan for the downtown, $15,000 set aside for that. We have a code update to continue that work. About doing our codes to reflect the vision that's in the Vision Central Heber of 30,000. And of course, council wanted some promotion of the downtown and we've got $74,000 put in that budget. And that's really all the money that we have budgeted for our PIO. Number four is Community Investment Agency. This is contingent upon getting the inter-local agreements done. We met with the school board last week and staff is going to report back to the school board with all the items that are requested here in another week and be very responsive to what they request of us. Number five is the Central Heber Water and Sewer Infrastructure Replacement Project. We are heading into year three of four. This is a $48 million project of replacing all the water and sewer lines on the east side of our district. We've got three projects. S-41 that has 5.3 million in it. W-071, which has 3 million in it. And I-029, which has about 2 million in it. S stands for sewer, W is water, and I, of course, is project irrigation. Number six is pressurized irrigation. Remember, we have a couple of projects to transition our system into a truly operable pressurized system with meters. And we have two projects, I-028 and I-029, with about $7 million set aside for those projects. Priority number seven with your transportation focus. We have money set aside for a roads master plan addendum. Eight was your water system redundancy. We've got $300,000 set aside for the hospital well and the generators needed to make sure we have redundancy there. Number nine is the affordable housing plan. We are negotiating right now with Jordan L. Ridge to see if we can't amend their current affordable housing obligations to meet a greater need of lower AMI, 60% AMI, for example, rather than the contracted 80% AMI. Number 10 is the cemetery administration building. Next steps are under review. Recall that we got bids back that were about $200,000 more than they had. And we're evaluating next steps there. Number 11 is Main Street Trees. We have about $15,000 set aside for new Main Street trees. Yes?
On number eight, is there no additional parts of the water system issue? That's the only one that we're talking about?
This is specifically talking about the well that's located adjacent to the hospital. Recall that when Matthew gave you his SWOT analysis, his chief concern was that we don't have any backup generator. If the power goes out, we don't have any well capacity there. So this is going to install a new backup generator. So if we do have an outage, we keep on producing the water.
So when we talked about that during the budget discovery, part of that, that was talking about security, physical security and digital security and other water sources. Did that fall off this year's budget?
Matthew, I'll let you speak to that. Thank you, Matthew. Aaron, any other questions on that? Priority number 12 was the Heber Valley Art Center. And the notion there was that we would execute on the ground lease terms that council approved this past year. 13, historic preservation. We've got $50,000 in the budget. General fund specifically. Number 14 is trail maintenance, reserve, and linkage. What we've done is we've dedicated 25% of the budgeted tap tax revenues, or $150,000, that we'll put away every year for trail maintenance. We also have a trail linkage project of $23,000. Dark Sky, we've included $100,000 in Fund 42 for the continued change-out of streetlights into dark sky compliant. Number 16 is the Heber Valley Corridor Planning and Beautification. This is... This is ongoing as we look at trying to improve those areas. Number 17, short-term rental policy updates. These policy updates are complete. I can adopt those about three months ago. Number 18 is year look-alikes continued. We have $2.5 million set aside for the Coyote Springs park. We have $200,000 set aside to complete the environmental work for the Muirfield park. Once that environmental work is complete, we'll shift gears and get into the design of Muirfield and move forward on that as quickly as we can. You also have an action register. That's the back page of your priority list. You had seven action items. The first was the airport fee analysis. We anticipate that the fee analysis will be reviewed by you and adopted by July 1 of this year. In fact, we have incorporated the proposed rates into the airport fund and we'll talk about that just a little bit. Number two is the GIS city works. We've included $92,300 to continue the process of getting the city completely onboard with Esri and the city works. Staffing assessment. We've got the internal assessment going on. Shree is doing the internal assessment of what our needs are there. And we may have a recommendation coming out to actually hire a firm in some cases to really quantify what those needs may be. Number four is business license fee update. That is completed and Mindy is here tonight to share with you the findings of that study that Science Bank did for us. Number five is the Cross Street Addendum. I already spoke about this. We have the 40,000 included in the budget to complete this process. Roundabout art, we have 90,000 of tap tax money set aside to complete the artwork and about at least three of your roundabouts, maybe four. And finally is number seven, the flood channel study. We have $100,000 in the budget to do the work on that study. Let me pause there, council. Any questions regarding how we've incorporated your priorities into the fiscal year 25 budget?
Does the GIS fee that's on there right now, is that just the onboarding fee or is that an ongoing that we'll have to think about in the future? Every year fee?
Our budget this year, we're trying to get all set up with the city works. And as we suppose, license fees next year. And ongoing years.
And then the Cross Street, we have that twice. This 40K is for the thing of the...
The same that you included in your address as well.
So it's one amendment to our master plan. Includes both the update and the Cross Street.
And the other value that you could add to the engineering work on that part?
They're both the same money, but 40,000 is the same. It's just twice. Scope of that one report covers all.
Any other questions, Mike? We have five pedestrian crossings. We have to get permits from the Army Corps of Engineers to get those completed. Or Spring Creek. Yes? Scott? These are only the ones that we've got money in the budget. The burying the power lines staff promised to come back in midsummer to give you a report on our strategy for doing this app. Any others? We expect the work on Wasatch Vista to be done this fiscal year. It's that, Mark. Would you take a moment and update council on that project? Absolutely. No question about it. Yep.
And then Matt, was there an affordable housing section that I just glossed over?
That's in there. So... Yes? We have got Scott Loomis aboard and he is working with our team as we negotiate possible changes to the Jordan L. Ridge agreement. I guess it's a great idea. We'll make that happen. We meet with them once a month just to walk through what's happening and get it updated. We'd love to share that with you as well. No, with Nick Frost, who's the attorney for the Wasatch County Housing Board.
She's with...
Angelica?
Angelica. She's, she's the...
Heavy lifting.
Yeah, heavy lifting. Basically qualify. Who is qualified? She takes on...
Happy to. Happy to. I think she'd love to come. Summit County.
But she is now obviously...
Yep. We'll make that happen. Yes. Any other questions regarding how we've incorporated your priorities into the budget? Any other questions regarding how we've incorporated your priorities into the budget? If not, I'm going to keep going. Let's begin talking about uh some of the economic assumptions that are driving the decisions that we made, particularly in regards to revenue projections. Uh, this data is coming out of the governor's office of planning a budget as well as the uh U of U Policy Institute. Uh, notice here on the left-hand side, Economic Council member surveys indicating that there's zero percent. Uh, indicating Utah currently in recession, zero percent indicating that US is currently in recession. Uh, but there's a median probability of Utah recession next six to twelve months, at least fifty percent chance. Uh, median po- probability of a US recession in twenty-four, about a twenty-five percent chance. So fairly low. Utah has one of the hottest economies, if not the hottest economy right now in the country. In fact, the Wall Street Journal had an article about a about three weeks ago indicating that Utah was the number one state for tech investment right now. And so uh I don't know if there's a lot of risk for recession. Slow.
So if there are primary risk or high housing costs, which is not new to us.
So with article, Wall Street Journal, uh, April twenty fifth, US economic growth slows to one point six percent. Inflation stays firm. So we are still seeing stubborn inflation and and a slowing economy. Uh, we also have uh article entitled twenty twenty-four economic. Utah Economic Report to the Governor Highlights. And this is January twelfth states that Utah Economic Council projects continued economic growth in twenty-four, albeit at a declared pace compared to twenty-three. Decelerated pace, thank you, uh, compared to twenty-three. You'll see that in the revenue projections that we share with you, most notably the sales tax. The last one I want to show you is, again, this is from the Utah Economic Council Forecast. Um, there's three of them I want to share with you. The first is Utah average uh annual pay. They expect it to go up four percent in twenty-four and I think that's a three point six percent in twenty-five. Uh, the Utah total taxable sales, this is a big one for us. Uh, twenty-four expected to go up three point five percent. And then twenty-five, three point seven percent. So these are fairly small increases, the forecasting statewide. And lastly is the Utah average housing price. I can go up two percent in twenty-four and two point three percent in twenty-five. So those four budget concerns I want to share with you and none of these are new. We've talked about these numerous times, most recently, of course, at our budget retreat. Sorry, our council retreat back in January. The first budget concern is increased reliance on sales tax. Interestingly, um, our top four, top four general fund revenues account for eighty-one percent of general fund revenues. Those are sales tax, property taxes, franchise fees and building permits. Again, the top four account for eighty-one percent of all general fund revenues. Total twenty-five general fund revenues is projected at fifteen point three million dollars, which is only a two percent increase above the current fiscal year. So it's a very diminutive increase. And so.
What we're seeing here is that with the increased reliance on sales tax, sales tax is becoming around forty-six to forty-seven percent of our general fund revenues. So nearly half of your general fund revenues is coming from sales tax.
And and that creates that creates some challenges, which I'll share with you in just a moment. As you know, we've had twelve recessions since the Great Depression. Uh, our last one was, of course, tied with the COVID nineteen lockdowns. And with each recession comes various economic challenges and uh we'll go through other recessions in the future. And so it's really important that we understand the risks that we face. Having such a large portion of our general fund relying upon a very volatile revenue source. The second budget concern is softening of the sales tax revenues. We showed this to you in January retreat. And what this is looking at your sales tax receipts by month. By year. So for example, you've got years seventeen through twenty-four and we break the months down for each of those years. And the sales in green are increases that are five percent or less. And the sales that are yellow are actually percent declines from the previous years uh indicator. So you can see beginning in two thousand eighteen, we had a couple of sales in green. Continued nineteen uh in twenty, we actually had one sale that was yellow. Uh, twenty-one, one cell green, but then in twenty-two, you start seeing a quarter of the year uh being less than five percent growth. Twenty-three, that continues to grow. It includes, of course, a number of the cells that are declines compared to the year previous. We're seeing that can trend continue in twenty-four as well. We put in there, though, the last two months, which are strong. Uh, you'll look at uh receipts for January, February, that came in a hundred and ten, a hundred and thirteen percent. And that did influence our sales tax revenues, which we will share with you in just a moment. It's two months. That's correct. That is correct. Yep. And so this here is showing you that between two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twenty-two, we were on a unprecedented run of sales tax increases. Being double-digit every year but one for that eleven-year run. And what you see now is over the last two years, it is. It is kind of softened, it's flattened. And the percent increases are uh below two percent. So it is a big change from the what we saw for nearly a decade of having double-digit increases. Budget concern number three is government of pleasure and pressures and the um. The project that really uh symbolizes this is the Cemetery Admin Building. Uh, we had a budget of two point five million dollars and the lowest bid came in at two point one million higher than our budget of two point five. So we're still seeing a lot of stubborn inflation out there. And the last concern is employee recruitment and retention. I think you'll find this fascinating. I did. I broke this information down into two categories. The top category is looking at management position changes since fiscal year twenty-three. And what you're looking at here is a large number of leadership positions turned over. But they're turned over because of retirement. And so what our challenge here is, of course, recruitment, making sure that we can continue to recruit all-stars. But what this also means is we are turning into a very much younger organization. Which is quite interesting and exciting, quite frankly. On the bottom, I've got a list of positions that are non-manager positions that changed over fiscal year twenty-three. And the challenge here is not just recruitment, it is also retention, making sure that retaining these employees, because every time we have a turnover. It, of course, increase, it impacts our efficiency, it impacts our cost. And it's it's important that we maintain redundancy and resiliency uh throughout the entire year. And so what's really compounding our ability to recruit, and you know this, is the. Ongoing deficit between the housing cost and what the income is. Uh, you can see the average income in twenty-three is a hundred fifteen thousand dollars, but in order to fund a home. All right, so let me just share with you some fiscal year twenty-five budget initiatives. Uh, we include a hundred thousand dollars for our lobbyist, Dave Stewart. This will be the third year that we'll have him under contract. Uh, number two is uh a high deductible health plan. The IRS increased the deductible amounts for the individual from fifteen hundred to sixteen hundred. And the family from three thousand to thirty-two hundred. Uh, staff is advocating that we include the cost in the budget. We've neglected to include that cost today. We just ran out of time. It's about sixteen thousand dollars and believe that that should be added to the budget to make that difference up. Number. The increase from uh fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred or from three thousand, thirty, thirty-two hundred, based on what plan the employee had. Yes. We we pay them quarterly for that HSA. And it goes into their HSA account. Number three is interesting. Um. This number three impacts uh the Tier Two and Public Employees Hybrid Program. Uh, to give you some background, uh, the state Tier Two program requires employers to pay ten percent annually uh into this program. When the pension rate is below ten percent, the difference between that pension rate and the ten percent goes into the employee's 401K. Beginning in July, that pension rate is going to exceed ten percent. And the employee is going to be obligated to pay that. In fact, in July, it's going to go up to ten point seven percent. And what we're advocating is that we include in the budget the point seven percent uh for impacted employees as a form of subsidy. And again, this would not impact PD because PD already has their own URS subsidy paid by the city. Just it would impact those employees that are on the Tier Two Public Employees Hybrid Program. Okay? And that is included in the budget. Uh, number four is Main Street Foreground Initiative. Recall last year, we allocated thirty thousand dollars to the camps, hired a full-line employee. Chamber is forty thousand dollars in the Kiddy. We're going to do that again in twenty-five. And uh, we promised them for two years and twenty-five would be the second year of our donation of thirty thousand dollars. And lastly is the MAG Metlin Association of Governments jurisdictional cast cash assessments. This is showing you Hebrew's assessment, uh, which is going to be about uh fifty-three thousand dollars and that is included in the budget. And that does include our trail coordinator and our grant writer Nancy O'Toole. I'm going to let Sarah talk to you about the twenty-five.
Before she does, Matt, is it common for, this is just, sorry, everybody knows this. Is it common for a city to pay the HSA? Or is that that seems uncommon. Is it common to pay a pension change where they've been receiving the benefit in the 401K? Of it being lower than ten percent, right?
There's just a big comment, I just don't have it. And then we're standing there. When each uh has their full plans go up. So let me speak to the high deductible health plan first. You were cities have a high deductible plan for a number of years. And um, what the city's also done is rely on a safety account. And usually put a deductible down into that account for for a quarter of the year.
Most cities I'm aware of have high deductible health plans and they do provide an HSA that offsets that deductible. That is pretty consistent. Now, when it comes to the Tier Two and Public Employees Hybrid Plan, it's all.
It's actually all over the board. Some cities are saying, no, employees are going to pick it up. Some cities are saying, no, we're going to pick it up. Some cities are saying, we'll share that cost. It is over the board and it comes with policy decision. I'm advocating that. This year and this year by year issue.
The reason this is all over the board is because in the history of the hybrid, this has never happened. It when when the hybrid plan was created, it was just written as a trigger and it had never triggered until this year. So that's why everybody was a little bit scrambling to. Perhaps. But it could be more that just salaries are going up at such an increasing rate that the pension is just not keeping up with increasing salaries.
But with that mentality, then we may see this every year for a while.
You will like. I don't think it's going away anytime soon.
Ultimately, it'll be a policy decision uh that will incorporate into your fiscal year twenty-five budget.
The legislature is saying cities are not allowed to just make it up. We can't just put. We can't just put more into a URS, like they're they're prohibiting that. They may change their minds, so it all relies on the legislature. So what cities are doing is trying to just to map the coin, like all the board is trying to subsidize it. As as a form of a one-time bonus. Well, and to put it into context.
All right, sorry, my internet is goofy, so I'm going to just turn it. Okay, so there's three main changes in their allocation. One. We uh kind of worked with all the department heads and scrubbed how internal services were being allocated across enterprise funds and how their own. Um, salaries were being allocated. So you might see some. So you might see some fluctuations in um like internal service charges, but that's just because like Matthew went through and he. And we just went through and said, hey, is is Sarah's salary really getting allocated appropriate? Is Shree's salary getting allocated appropriate? So that's number one, is we just reworked the salary, the salaries and benefits. Two is the shared cost. Oh, so we have many citywide costs. The audit, the, you know, the ERP software, lots of things. And historically, we've taken those costs. And we've we've shared it with every department in the general fund. Well, we decided, we're all just general fund, right? It's it's all, because it's all one fund, we're going to stop allocating it. Through every general fund department, because it was, it's just kind of a, honestly, it's kind of a pain. So we're we're going to stop allocating those general fund costs to all the departments and we're just going to leave it in the admin fund or the IT or not fund, the department. So you'll see the shared costs are now just split between the five enterprise funds and it'll hit just one department in the general fund. So you'll, you might see some swings that way. And then three is. We've had in a, we've had a fleet department, an internal service department. Um. We decided to really utilize Glenn and his team to the fullest. So he is now. A a fully operating internal service fund. All of his salary lives there, all of his operating expenses live there. And we are now taking all of those expenses and allocating it across uh across citywide that utilizes the fleet services. So you're going to see some really kind of wild swings that way. Um.
All right, let me jump into some general budget details and assumptions uh for fiscal year twenty-five. First of all, I presented to you a balanced budget. I'm required to do that by state, state statute. However, um, many of the budgets or funds are utilizing reserves in order to balance them. We'll talk about that in a little bit. A lot of that is purposely drawing down reserves or to pay these large capital projects. It was forecast, it was planned to be that way. We are utilizing nearly three hundred thousand dollars from the general fund to balance it. So we're using about three hundred thousand dollars from the general fund reserve to balance it. Um, we have uh some general revenue assumptions for soft growth and then you have the primary revenue sources, the primary one being the sales tax. We are budgeting two percent above projected in the current fiscal year, so very conservative. Uh, the general fund reserve, this is, this is a strong benchmark that the mayor and council should be absolutely proud of. And that is you have a projected general fund reserve of thirty percent, thirty-seven percent right now. State law limits you at thirty-five percent, so we'll have to at the end of the year transfer over. A lot of cities do not have fiscal discipline to develop this type of reserve. Well done. Uh, enterprise fund reserves being purposely drawn down to cover capital costs. You'll see that across the board. Uh, top right, property tax increase is not included in the fiscal year twenty-five budget. Let me say that again. We do not include a property tax increase in the general fund for fiscal year twenty-five. We will share with you in a moment some property tax alternatives as you've asked us to do, but we do not include a property tax increase. Uh, enterprise rate increases are included in all four of your enterprise funds based upon a new utility study, and we'll go over that here in just a moment. We also have a business license fee increase. We also have a business license fee increase and we have airport fee increases to round out the overall citywide increases. Yes? We, we actually budgeted 2% above projected for '24. Well, we'll need to look at that. So based up on the Excel spreadsheets, it was 2% above projected. So let's look at that mic and get back to you if we may.
Yeah, but I think.
It does. I agree. Let's verify that mic. So let me talk to you about the proposed COLA and merit increases for fiscal year '25. We are advocating for a citywide COLA of 3.2%. Why? Because that matches the February 24th Mountain Plains CPI. This would be payable the first full pay period in July and the budget amount is $269,000 for that. Regarding the merit, we have 3% budgeted for all employees except uniformed officers. 3% we paid out based upon their employee valuation. It's also paid out in the first full pay period after January. The budget amount is $134,000. It's important to note that the city council recently adopted a new policy for uniformed officers, that they would get 5%. That's a flat amount, except for that poor performers would see smaller percentage increases. And I would note that the Personnel Committee is working to draft a similar policy for all non-uniform positions. Let me pause there. You feel comfortable with the 3.2% COLA and generally speaking, the 3% merit for fiscal year '25?
Yes, but I have to make sure there's a way to give people merit increases if they reach the max.
So if they reach their max, the max, we can't give them the merit increases. However, the Personnel Committee is looking at some type of bonus to award them for performance based. I think that should be pay for performance type of thing. And I know Parker has made that one of his top priorities for the Personnel Committee. Here.
For one, just focus and stay with this line, we still have.
Yep.
Does the 5% include all of the step revisions, mid-max and so forth that we've made? There you are, Chief. That includes all of that or is this above that?
No, that, that.
Includes all of that. Okay, so you're going to be able to.
Matthew? Yeah, so the, the mid-max will go away and then as they hit their evaluation with their anniversary date, they're going to go up that 5% if it's warranted and to the next step. And then a year from then, it'd continue on until they're topped out. What's that? Yes. Yes, and the officers were very excited about it going through council.
Two new positions, one is a part-time HR analyst and the second is a full-time or utility maintenance operator for a total cost of $156,000. Again, you can see that we have just about a small number of employees due to the softening of the revenues. But the tentative budget also includes, the following request includes probation, includes mid-max, includes certification requests, selective salary increases, but generally speaking, it only includes these two new positions.
And those are net new, so that the retirees are slated to be replaced. The headcount didn't change?
Yeah, so if somebody retires, we're still funding that position. That number doesn't change. This would actually increase the city's employment by one full-time equivalent and one part-time equivalent. I'm going to let Sarah read.
We're anticipating that they'll take on the payroll function for the city and then do all of the kind of the, the to-do tasks that Shuri is doing with onboarding, with processing new hires, with submitting job applications, like all of that, so that she can focus on more strategic, higher-level management things.
So there were a number of requests. I apologize, this is somehow bleeding over. But there were four requests that were not funded. We had an animal control tech from part-time to full-time. I will say however, that the mayor spoke with me and if we do get a new updated, you know, local agreement where our partners are willing to fund this, we can certainly add that back in, not addition.
So just to kind of let the council know, the Animal Control Board has been giving the budget with the chief for what, the last four months, three, four months, chief? To go from the part-time person to the full-time position because one of the full-time is retired, right, chief? Yes, and so chief wants to make the part-time become the full-time. We haven't had any pushback on the Animal Services Board and it, I think it's just Midway City that needs to present their budget so far. So if all of the entities adopt that, then that animal control tech can be funded with the assessment that the other cities and such pay.
And we can bring that back to you as a budget amendment maybe, or maybe even include it in the funding.
Yeah, and, and Matt, that, that budget's got to go forward with or without the proposed MLU. You see what I mean? So the budget will be approved likely separately.
We did not include a senior planner from community development, nor did we include two police officer positions for PD. So let me share with you, this is a position history and general fund salary and benefits looking at by department. So the top one, that's kind of in a orangish, yellowish, brownish color, is just showing you new positions by department since 2019. And the bottom one is simply showing you salaries. Salaries is our number one cost. It is for every organization. And this is simply showing you what it is for the various departments. Employee benefits review. We are still negotiating and working with our brokers. We started the year out looking at between a 20 and 21% increase, got it down to 14, and we believe we've got it down to a 4% increase. However, it will require us to change our current provider, United Healthcare, to either P E H P or going to be Aetna. We haven't finalized it yet, but we've got a 4% increase for health insurance and a 1.6% increase for dental. So, so working very hard on that. We're with United Healthcare and every year we have to negotiate the new contracts. They initially came in high. Shuri has done an amazing job working with the brokers to get it down. We believe it won't be an increase more than 4%, but that will require us to change health insurance providers. Yes, we. Yep. Not with what we're negotiating. It will be this, it will be the same deductible, the same plan, generally speaking. Yes, yes. The, the main concern, really quick, the main concern we have is we've had a number of very serious claims. We want to make sure there's continuity between the existing doctors are using and the new plan having those same doctors.
In-network and out-of-network coverage. It's got to be basically the same.
That's right.
If you're going to switch over.
That's right.
Because that's big disruption.
That's right.
Lots of frustration.
And that analysis is being done. That's why we don't have the final number yet, so. Debt portfolio, this is simply just a snapshot of our debt portfolio. I'm not going to dive into this, other than the state, most of the debt is due to public safety building, which was issued back in 2014, the Public Works Building. And of course, the big one being the Central Heber Water and Sewer Line Project, which we are in year three of four, so have another year beyond this one. And of course, we will have one more debt issuance in '24, which is Utah Border Water Resources for nearly $2 million. So this is your debt portfolio right here. This is it. Lastly, before we dive into the funds is I want to make sure you understand that, you know, we have a goal of assembling land to achieve our downtown Central Heber vision. We have three parcels of property we want to purchase. The first is the Heber Light and Power Admin Building. We have $1.8 million expected purchase price. We have the Wasatch County Fire Station. We know the appraisal has said it's 1.3 million. And we also hope to purchase the Wasatch County Administration Building. Crap shoot is somewhere between three and four million. We do not have any money in the fiscal year '25 budget to make these purchases, but there are some options and let me run through those very quickly for you. The first is we're looking at selling an acre and a half parcel that we own in the Airport Commerce Park that will net us about $750,000, which is some good seed money. Two is the tax increment, but that's not going to generate anything for a couple of years. That's not going to be a handy tool for us. Potential some land trades, potential with the county. So we own 16 acres of the Duke parcel on 500 East, potentially trade some of the land to the county, potentially. Potentially Jordanell Ridge, we have 50 acres by contract that's going to come to the city for city purposes. Potentially a portion of that 50 acres could be then traded to the county. Traded, sold, whatever works out in our best interest.
We had that, I guess, four-year now farm lease with the Duke family and we can't break it unless we put a park there or they, you know, we would be liable. So I, I really think the Duke Farm, everyone fits into our parks master plan that we've adopted in the last few years. It's going to provide incredible needed open space as well as trail connections. So I'm hopeful that that's not on the table for you to consider.
Unless, is it something that can be considered as county, all park facilities?
Yes.
I know you're saying that, but I'm.
And the Dukes are interested in that.
If we, if we spoke to the Dukes and had them share this, but they're not. Is that a possibility then maybe using that land swap or land trade or spot swap would be something that we go towards instead of the one little bit, through the Wasatch County Fire Station property?
It's value for value.
If, if that's a possibility or the same amount, the same size, the same size, and they could use a portion of it.
That's the notion. That's the notion. Recreation, but the county would own the land and provide the recreation opportunity. Again, these are just ideas. The other one is inter-fund loan, maybe a inter-fund loan between the general fund and the CRA perhaps. We have some limited resources in '42, a couple hundred thousand dollars, not a lot. We could reallocate all or a portion of the 2.5 million dollars. We have it set aside for the cemetery admin building, that's an option. And of course, we could go after some grants. I intend to get Nancy O'Toole and look at some grants that might help us purchase these parcels. The main point being is we still have to come up with a strategy to close on these parcels. We expect that Heber Light and Power and the Wasatch County Fire Station parcels will be up for sale this year, I should say fiscal year '25.
When did we expect it here back from the admin building options?
So my understanding, you were at the meeting and I was, Heber Light Power is conducting a appraisal at this point. It's going to take them a couple of months.
I may have missed the cemetery admin building.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. So we are interviewing the general contractors who bid, trying to understand if there's a way we can value engineer the costs down. We're also meeting with an architect tomorrow to get us some ideas. And if we can get close to that bogey of 2.5 million, we'll move forward or maybe do a part of the project. We just got to figure out what's going to happen.
Should we expect to do that back to the council soon?
I imagine in May we'll report back to you.
Sorry, Mike.
Okay, I just see that these are, these are very likely. You have to be ready.
Yep. That's right. Maybe even a loan, maybe perhaps we get a loan for them, so. I just want to make sure you're underware, aware that we do not have any monies in the budget for the purchase of these. Mark, are you on? Mark is in charge of that project and he's. Mark, we can't hear you.
That was pretty. So ask the question again. Is that, is that the sale of that lot?
Yes, this is the commercial lot. We, what we are doing now is we wanted to verify the price that we had kind of negotiated and asked for. Searcher's gotten back to us and said that it is a very good price for it. Jeremy Cook is looking at the final phases of that contract. Instead of doing a term sheet like we've done, we're now just matriculating it all into a contract and anticipate that once Jeremy's looked at it and is okay with it, we'll get it signed. Yep. They, that's all, yes, pursuant to the request that the council had, that's all being floated in the negotiation. Jobs, as I've talked to Jeremy, that, that is a high mark that we're looking for. We're just kind of deciding how best to set that and how we would enforce that if it came later on, so. Yeah, you had jobs. There were some other suggestions that you had and how many, the building that they would make in comparison with what they were.
We're going to jump into part two. This is the fun summary. Any questions?
I think if you want her building sale, it's basically delayed into 2016 or whatever. So perhaps that's not as crazy as the fire station already or such. So hopefully we can pay time. It may not actually cost, but the same with the fires.
Any different questions?
All right. Okay, so as I mentioned, when we kicked this off, is local governments use what's called fund accounting and we leverage 25 funds to operate the city. We've added a new fund, it's the one in turquoise, it's called the North Village Impact Fee Fund. This is to account for the impact fees that are generated specifically in the North Village for the new master plant in that area, particularly the stormwater plan, remember, is that right, Russ? Water in roads. So it's, it's to account specifically for all the impact fees in the North Village area. Yes?
Where are we going to get the north village presentation?
We have actually started collecting that. And so we collect that, it's in the general fund and we restrict it as a restricted revenue source. We have an obligation to come back and share with you strategies of how to leverage that for the benefit of the North Village. No, it's in the general fund. Tony, do you recall how many permits have paid that? Starting. All right. For this year '25, citywide, all funds funded, this is, you can see all 25 funds is $69,026,400. This is down 20% from this year '24 to this year. Why? Because Russ has been very diligent in winding down a lot of these large capital projects, such as the road maintenance projects, such as Section B of the Eastern Bypass. That's why this is down, is because we've been able to get some of these capital projects done. So all I'm going to do is I'm going to dive into what's called the, the government funds first, and we're going to do that with the general fund, which is really the most important fund for government operations. Let me review with you some key revenue assumptions in the general fund first. As I've mentioned, there is no property tax increase budgeted. Two, the general fund revenues have increased by 2%. Sales tax growth. Sales tax growth.
Budgeted at 2% over 2024 projected revenues. You can have a little track, a little check in.
Building permit projections are of 250 residential permits and 20,000 square feet of commercial. That's the bogey we're using for determining those revenues. We do have a business license fee increase, which Mindy's going to talk to you about in just a moment. City is utilizing $277,000 of reserves in the general fund to balance it. Reserves in the general fund are budgeted at 37% or $5.5 million. And we'll have to make sure by year end it's down to 35%. That's correct. Yep. Tap tax revenue budgeted at $600,000 and we'll do a deep dive on that in just a moment. And we believe that Heber Light Power will pay their annual dividend of $250,000 based on a conversation I had with their executive manager last week. All right, general fund revenue table. This is just a summary of all the major revenue categories in the general fund. And you can see it's increased by 2%. These are the revenues by source. And I've highlighted with the arrow that sales tax is the largest at 46%. This is not anything new, followed by property tax, license and permits and franchise fees. And what I want to do next is I want to invite Mindy to come up and share with you some about the business license study that was recently completed by Zions Bank. Mindy?
Matt, if Heber Light and Power doesn't pay the dividend, will that just come out of the reserves?
Yes.
Like yesterday?
So I do not have information right now. So we did periodically appearance analysis, kind of do studies to look at our revenues, make sure that we are covering the administrative costs of enforcing these fees for regulating business licenses. Last study that we did, I believe it was in 2019, before that it was 2013. So we did, I don't know, with Zions Bank to do your study and make sure that we're in line with our increased costs, just with wages going up, people working on these things now. So this is kind of what they come back with, the papers that you guys have show our revenues. And then their, they don't really recommend fees, they just give us that. But it's kind of their suggestion of what that's costing us and what they would recommend that we have brought with us. These, the fees you have, I think they have the disproportionate fees at the end of them. The biggest ones that are contracted by that are big retail and those are based on lease rentals. So obviously your Walmart assessments, those are going to have a lot of police for that to be then just a shop like that. They're really based on. We currently have them max out at $2,000 a year, the disproportionate fee for them is $10,000. So you guys just want to decide right now. Those.
We got $2,000.
Yes. Yeah. And they, they do have a big impact that is being shared by us, whether it's taxpayers, businesses, any of that. So we just need to determine how we want to spread that out. If we want to increase that, I don't think we take them up to $17,000, that might be real hard. That's a hard sale. Definitely increasing that, like they, they brought the revenue. Yeah. I don't think.
Like we did just get like the updated draft yes, yesterday, Tuesday. So we haven't had a chance to dig into it fully, but it, the full final report will explain how their, oh my gosh, their, thank you, the methodology, that's exactly the word. And that really is, that increase is really the disproportionate cost of it, right? And you spoke to a little bit, but it's, it's police time going to the stores and they calculate that based on what is the average single family home, like how many times does an officer go to a single family residence? And they say, and so well, that's our baseline. And how many more times do the police need to respond to a, a large retail store? So it is high, but that's what it costs to respond to their police needs.
Do you know if it's possible to get additional commercial breakdowns? A gap between commercial and large?
So seasonals are kind of like our fireworks stands, snow cone. So things that are just open like for the summer type things. Yes. Yeah.
I just mean, look at the retail, they're providing our budget.
Exactly. And so that's kind of the offset is how hard do you want to hit them when they're already our sales tax revenue? So that's.
Thanks for that.
Exactly. Yeah. Yep. So, yeah, just kind of food for thought. Yes. Yeah. So, yeah, the, the current restaurant is about 300, 340, I believe. Something that I do, yeah, and I think that's maybe what we need to do is a little. So any food truck, any food truck in the city is $100. They're a huge impact on our community, whether it's monetary or just traffic. And I mean, all of these businesses are paying additional impact fees for their traffic, for their sewer, for their water. These guys are getting off so incredibly cheap. And then they keep wanting more from us. They keep wanting more. We need a parking area. We need garbage. We need tables. So kind of, we need to look at them more as a full-time business instead of these. I'm not sure. And that's something I want to look into a little bit further. The state has cut a lot of our ability of regulation out from under us with them. So we do have state code we have to follow as well as kind of what's in here. The only thing they really uphold is health inspections. They can no longer be required to get secondary licensing. So if a food truck wants to come here from Provo every day, we can't require them to get a license with us. Yeah. And their sales tax is only done from their base location.
Yeah.
They don't pay us, no. They have to register where their truck is, or they have to get a license where their truck is registered. So if their like home base is here, they have to have it with us. I just can't require like the Waffle Love to get a Heber.
So they don't pay any sales tax if their base is out of town or any, not even business with them?
Unless it's a special event like Heber Market on Main.
Yeah.
Unless it's a special event.
We should probably bring that back up for maybe a bigger conversation too.
So we hope to. Yeah, we hope to do that at your next budget workshop, which is on May 7th. But Yvonne, you made a, you asked a question about the state requirements. We cannot charge a business license fee that's greater than the cost to regulate the businesses. That's the key provision.
I'm looking at this really differently. Anything we charge, not the business owners, it's the people that this is serving. I'm definitely in favor of less fees. This is such a small part of our budget. We'd rather have less fees and more sales. Happy, happy business owners. Yeah, but we have 10 food trucks. We just imagine, just imagine if we had 10 food trucks, we change their fee to $1,000 each, half of them.
$20 more?
I'm just saying if we did, half of them already do register here, so we'll pay that anyway. Like, do we want to make enemies and step over dollars?
I prefer restaurants, I'd rather have more restaurants.
I think that's the point I wanted to make was, even if that, even if that food truck sleeps in Daniel or sleeps in the county, they come a mile in, we do not see that sales tax. So my, so something I've been thinking about is, fine, they're here, but what is, what does the opportunity cost? Like if someone's going to a food truck, that means they're not going to a brick and mortar where we do collect sales tax. So it's just something to think about. They're, they really are utilizing our resources, but with no benefits. I mean, there's benefit to the person using the food truck, of course. But outside of special events, food trucks are not, unless they sleep in Heber City, and you know what I mean, but unless their home base is Heber City, we do not see any benefit from a food truck. That is not, that is not a special event as far as I know.
Could we make it a special event? We make an ongoing special event so that when people come?
Interesting is, one question I have a couple of years ago is, what, what is the burden that they, I mean, legally, if they're, if they're causing a burden or an impact, then we look at that. But just to say, well, they're here and they're taking other people who work. They do, as Scott was indicating, and I've found it too, they do serve a purpose for the people in the community. It's much less expensive, they're organized down, you have a lot of the Latino community that go there, workers that are around here. Where it's more expensive, you almost know the restaurants, they go there quick. And so I, I think you ought to balance, what is the impact seriously? And not just simply generally say, folks are here and not going to the brick and mortar because they are serving a purpose for the citizens. You got to balance that with regard to making revenue for the city.
At least understand the situation. I think Scott makes a good point, like, let's not spend, you know, send, spend more for the lot than what's in the safe. But we should know what's going on.
But there's giving, they did go for it, understand. Now they're a part of giving an issue. So again, it's all your life. They kind of bring this, you know, we're not better than this. Again, there is, being what they've set up, where they were just moving around. There's, I don't know if they pay rent, I'm sure they do. That's a permanent location that they're doing stuff. Do they pay a sales tax versus let's say you're setting one?
Don't know. Don't know.
I think it's just like that. There's one of them. It's one of them.
Yeah. In that variation, that you have in force, that you utilize at the base, and I don't know how that is.
The bathrooms.
In the bathrooms. Yeah. New impact, that's.
So that's where it's just kind of, it's helping people get into a business like all of us, like a dollar truck. They all start at, those start investing, which is great, they were able to make that beat. But if they're never hit with their true impact, it doesn't give them incentive to make that. It does, definitely. So there's pluses and minuses to all of it. I'm just going to say $100 for their license fee versus $340 or a restaurant paying their income, that's where we just maybe want it.
How many are licensed in Heber?
We probably have 20 and 25.
Food trucks. Wow.
There's a lot. And I get them probably twice a week, new ones, or twice a month, I mean.
They're based in Heber. They park in Heber.
Yes.
I can't even think of.
Yeah, there's a lot of them. I have like four right now that are in the approval process. So.
I just, I see it as a, like low-income housing, like giving these folks an opportunity to start their business. They want to take the risk, do the profit, pay their minimal fee, unless they want to pay for a nice cheap meal outside.
They're not, they're not.
They're just safer than running the base.
So like I said, just something you can't.
Just get things a little more in line with similar type services, so.
I want you to review this between now and your next budget workshop, which is on May 7th, and bring you back your ideas and let's continue this debate.
Great.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, let's dive into the tap tax. Let me start off by sharing with you what was funded with the tap tax proceeds that were being generated in fiscal year '23 when the tax was started and of course in fiscal year '24. So we have the water feature at $150,000. We have the Wasatch Vista Park, which Mark talked about earlier. We have about $70,000 for that part. We have the arts grant program, which was 10% of collections in calendar year '23, which is $44,000. And you're aware that you just made those awards, I think, at your last meeting. Heber Valley Railroad, we have obligation of $100,000 for the engineering on section C of that trail that sits on the west side of the railroad in Heber City. And of course, the band shell, look at about $100,000 for the band shell. So that's the obligations that we have against the tap tax in fiscal year '23, '24. What we're budgeting in fiscal year '25 is the following, as I mentioned earlier, looking at putting aside 25% of all tap tax revenues for trail maintenance. The $600,000, 25% is $150,000. Band shell, about $300,000. The arts grant program, looking at about $60,000 because we anticipate generating $600,000. And of course, roundabout art at $90,000, and that adds up to the $600,000. There is about $200, $250,000 left, assuming that we reached the $600,000 mark for fiscal year '24. But this is just showing you what we are pledging to use those tap tax revenues for. Any questions on that? No, that is, oh, that is, I want to say it's every five or 10 years, but we'll confirm that for you. Yep. It's 10 years, but there's something in the agreement that says they'll look at that population every few years. Yep. It could. It could. Yep. All right, let's move on to property tax trends. The main point here is that the property tax is incredibly stable under Utah state law. And in fact, you've had four property tax increases going back to fiscal year '10 and '11. You can see the increase by percent here. Again, we're not advocating any property tax increase in fiscal year '25. This actually goes back 25 years, give it that context. That's correct. Yep. That too. That too. General fund property tax accounts for about 35%. Again, this is the very stable revenue source. The average growth from fiscal year '18 to '24 has been about 13%. And that accounts for about $234,000 annually in new revenue growth. So I'm going to let Sarah talk to you about the two property tax alternatives that were, we've included in the PowerPoint. She's generated these. Recall a couple of years ago, you asked staff to generate property tax. So I'm going to let Sarah talk to you about the two property tax alternatives that were, we've included in the PowerPoint. She's generated these. Uh, recall, a couple of years ago, you asked staff to generate property tax alternatives for your consideration. We've generated two, and we're going to share those with you.
Okay, we can look at it two ways. We can say, hey, what is our fund deficit? And try to increase taxes just to cover that yearly deficit, or we can do maybe a more incremental, more consistent increase just based on the inflationary, um, rate. Uh, so the first one, our deficit right now is two seventy-eight. So you plug it into this little fancy model, and based on the average home value, which we got with our last truth in taxation, eight hundred ninety-three thousand dollars, the average homeowner would have an annual increase of thirty-seven and some change. Of course, the property, the business owners don't get that home, that primary home exemption, so there's a, um, a little bit more. Or scenario two, we just say, hey, what is the inflation this year? We're going to just increase it by the inflation amount. Well, inflation of three point two would increase property taxes eighty, about eighty-six thousand, eight-six-five, and the annual increase per household would be eleven dollars and fifty-eight cents, um, for shop. Totally for the year, for the year. And again, based on that eight hundred and ninety-three average home value, uh, primary residents get a forty-five percent exemption from their home value. So, uh, oh, ninety-six cents a month would be the inflationary increase. On scenario two. For residential, yeah.
Well, to do the inflationary one, that's, that's. Less than Netflix. We're not, we're not saying. Less than.
Scenario one, sorry, let me wait, second time is on. So scenario one is the fund deficit. We're going to say, hey, here's what we're short this year. And I feel like this is more made, we're going to look at this every year, see if you want to cover that.
But a nine percent increase.
Uh, yeah, I thought, I thought eight point six, I had it in my head.
Okay, well.
First number on there.
The best of me.
Yeah. Yep. And then the next one is.
Three point two.
Just increasing it to point two percent. Sorry, I'm, I'm putting back the word, sorry.
I just bought a mortgage on this, it's seven dollars.
But we were just talking about food trucks, right? This is a whole area, this is not, this is not watching. Unless it was a Wednesday special.
That's right.
Also, you asked us to put these alternatives in, and we've done that. A lot of cities are considering a inflationary increase, just to keep up with inflation. Um, we, what we propose to you is an inflationary increase and one that would fully fund the projected deficit use. Again, looking for a decision tonight, we don't have any of these into the budget, but if you want to include in the budget, you'll need to let us know on May seventh.
Here's quite a bit of frustrated business. And it's not just because of property. That whole thing that came out, this is, stated concerns about disproportionately. Issues that are. But I think they also need to take into consideration that not only.
Talk about that in just a minute.
And businesses. I mean, all of that will be great, you know, kind of. Whatever we decide to do. While there are some in our community with one hundred thousand million dollar funds, it might be.
Yeah, Ivan, or sorry, Councilmember Bernie, that is a really good point. Um, and you have to remember, like, if someone's home value is half of this, it's half of the amount, right? It would be a five dollar increase annually. So that, that's one thing to consider. But yes, I, I think your point is well made.
I think, oh, cool, sorry. As I say, I think we have, we have to be reminded or remember that the property tax might be more disproportionately felt by people that aren't utilizing other services that are, that are either on lower end or older or something like that. So for what it's worth, for discussion purposes, I would be more in favor of inflationary increase increasingly. The fees in other ways to better align the fee increases with people that are using the services. That, that's my thought process. But I don't see any, with the inflation that's happened, I don't see any logical way to say we don't increase the inflationary. It just doesn't, doesn't make a whole lot of sense to continue to subsidize.
Do we know if the school district's going to be doing a property tax increase?
I don't.
I'm pretty sure the county could because they've usually done the, the inflationary property tax increases. So that's something to consider, too. Um, I was doing some research for the Wasatch Back Economic Summit, right, it's coming up. And just looking at, thank you, just looking at our city demographics out of our eighteen thousand people, almost fifty percent are sixty-five and older. And I'm sure that many of them are wealthy, but I'm sure that many of them are also not. That's basically half of our population size, and maybe that's something we need to think more carefully about. But then the other third are under eighteen, right? So we have retirees and we have young families in our city, basically. And let's try to keep those big picture.
That's crazy.
Or eighteen and under.
So I didn't realize it was that stark. I don't recall, I mean, that started before. Maybe the Census Bureau as well, but that was from twenty-two on the census. And it's just, wow, because I, I never saw the retiring population be that high.
I, I've never seen, right, and I know you, because it becomes. That means only, that's. It's eighty-three percent, eighteen and under or sixty-five and older.
Right. Yeah, yeah, boom, boom, right?
I don't think anybody approved it.
Maybe Mark.
Maybe you have to take into consideration that many of these people are, are, how would I say, not real citizens, but they have property.
Secondary home?
That, that might be part of it, part of.
Well, I do wonder if the Census Bureau's counting that or not. Who knows? I don't know.
It might be property ownership, too. Maybe not people that live here that the ones that actually own it.
So be thinking about this. Again, if you want to include some sort of property tax increase, you'll need to let us know on your May seventh, uh, budget work meeting. All right? Yep, so this is always interesting, looking at the tax dollar, you know, for every tax dollar that is spent by your constituents. Of course, sixty-seven, almost sixty-eight percent goes to the school district, uh, about eleven point four percent goes to the county. Uh, under eight percent, less than eight cents comes to Heber City, and the rest goes to the fire district, um, water conservancy district, so forth. But the eight hundred pound grill is obviously the school district. And I showed you this back in January retreat, that Heber portion of our property tax on a home value of eight ninety-three, three sixty-two. The average annual cable bill is fourteen hundred dollars per year. You can make your own conclusions about the value of the tax versus what you can cable. Uh, building permits, uh, this is a big part of our revenues. Um, the top table is simply showing you, uh, history of building permits, uh, and year-over-year percent increase. Bottom right is showing you our budgeted number. We're going for two hundred and fifty permits, as I mentioned to you. That's the one on the right-hand side. Uh, we think we fitted that, I think, well, based upon the projections that we're seeing. What's that? And that would be great. But I understand most of that goes right back to WC three in many ways to pay for the service. So general fund expenditures by department, uh, it's three point six percent. And let me take again another moment, say thank you to the departments. We leaned on them, uh, to get the costs down, and they worked with us. They're very amiable, and I got nothing but, uh, praise and very proud of the way they worked as a team to get this down. Thank you, everyone.
Yay!
Well, I've worked for cities where it was like volunteer, and it was not that way. They were very understanding and wanted to make this work, so.
Will you go back one side?
Yep.
Do we know what caused ninety percent increase? Ninety?
Ninety percent.
Eighty-nine percent?
I mentioned earlier where we, and we brought in, uh, city work, somebody say, city works and the GIS. So the combination of those two, and then not.
So if you took what's a big inflation technology and you split it, we had a government, it would be so dramatic.
All right, expenditures by function, obviously, the police department's the largest. That's probably the most important of the services that we provide in the general fund. Um, so what I'm going to do now is I'm going to run through the remaining twenty-four funds, okay? Just hit the highlights and run through this pretty quick. Slow me down, ask questions if you got them. I'm going to start with the airport. The airport has beginning unaudited balance of about four grand. Total inflows about one million, total outflows about nine hundred eighty-two thousand. So the projected balance at the end of fiscal year twenty-five is going to increase to ninety-two thousand. It is critical that I make this point, and it's in red here. It says, note, these findings, these revenue expenditure, uh, let me back up. These revenue findings are subject to airport advisory board review, legal review, to make sure they comply with the, uh, settlement agreements, and council review and adoption. We expect the new fees and rates to be adopted by July one, twenty twenty-four. So although we've included potentially the new revenues here, we still have a process to go through, and you'll be a big part of that process beginning in June, right? Airport capital fund, this is to fund the capital projects at the airport. Um, most of the capital projects, as you know, are funded with FAA allocations that cover ninety percent. UDOT will generally cover five additional percent, leaving us with a grand total of five percent of the capital cost. We have a couple of key projects in fiscal year twenty-five. First is what we call the, I think it's pronounced the way it, way it's, uh, parcel. This is on the south end of the runway, southwest end, looking to purchase the ten acres there. Uh, we believe this could close in fiscal year twenty-four. Uh, it could go into twenty-five, but we do have our proportionate share in the fiscal year twenty-five budget. That's about two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. We also have money in there for the EIS Phase Two environmental work on the landfill, and also, of course, the airport master plan, the environmental work required to complete that. Next project is Capital Projects Fund Forty-two. Now, Fund Forty-two is simply a, a fund that accounts for general government capital projects. Its only revenue source are extra monies that come over from the general fund, such as when you have a fund balance that exceeds thirty-five percent. We had developed about a five million dollar balance here, and we've been spending it down on a lot of key projects. And so we intend to bring that fund balance down to about five hundred sixty-three thousand dollars by the end of fiscal year twenty-five. Again, that's purposeful. We still have a big decision to make regarding the cemetery admin building. We have two point five million budgeted at fiscal year twenty-five. And Mark and I are working it. We're going to try to figure out what we can do with that project. Next is the Public Safety Impact Fee Fund. Uh, these are impact fees, uh, for public safety. There's only generally one item we use the money for, and that's to pay off the debt service on the, on the, uh, PD building. CRA twenty twenty, this is a very small fund until we get the inter-local agreements in place. Uh, of noteworthyness is we've got the Heber City increment's going to start coming in, and we've got the Central Utah Water Conservancy District increment coming in. We don't really know how to project that. That's why we budget it so low. Uh, but just so you're aware, those increments will come in in twenty-five. We'll do a better job projecting it in twenty-six. But what we need to do is get these increments, excuse me, these inter-locals done fiscal year twenty, let me back up. We need to get these inter-local agreements done before December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. It's critical in order to get the Smiths increment. Okay?
Just since that's important. Do you, um, already have a, a task to try to get us back, talking with this school district again?
By way of an update, I was able to listen in, uh, through the online at the school district. They asked for three things. They asked for, one is a copy of the Zions Bank study, which I've got. I'm going to send it to you first, so you see it first. Uh, two, they asked for help in marketing the CRA. I met with Ryan today. He is updating our websites with specific information and videos on it, as well as having a handout that they can give out at the school district. Expect to have that done next week. And the third thing they asked was, can a school board member serve on the agency board? I don't believe so, but, um, Jeremy is doing a deep dive to verify whether that can take place or not. State statute, state law. This same question came up with the county, and at the time, our attorney was at along, and he did that research, and he told me, and, and the council at the time is no, and no one else can except for the city council.
I mean, it was a good question that they had, if we come back and say legally, no.
Yes, we have advisory committees, and I don't think they pushed back on that, but their interest was to have a board member serving on the agency board.
We didn't get to that slide with them.
Okay.
So we flashed it, but they didn't, we didn't talk through that one at all. I, I mean, again, if we come back and say legally, no, here's how we want your involvement, here's how we want your input.
Yep.
I just want to make sure we, we're having conversations, getting back on their schedule.
I want to get back on the schedule in May, quite frankly. We've got to get these adopted in June.
That was.
That's the PR. We'll have that next week. Yep. 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 I told Ryan that his is number one priority right now. Let's get that work done.
And then, um, should we also get scheduled to talk to the county again?
That's strategic. They've said, go to the school board. You went to school board. I think what we do is try to finalize the deal with the school board and then go back to the county. Um, I met with Dustin. He indicated that their, their, his council is looking at potentially, um, reducing the amount for some reason. Um, no, it's number of years. They want to reduce number of years. I, I said, it doesn't matter if we got a cap, you know? Whatever comes first, the years or the cap will determine it. So I don't understand why you want to reduce the years, so.
They don't, they think that less time. Broaden that understanding for them, that it's not a matter of time that makes it less money.
Yeah.
That, that seemed to be the same.
So I'm looking to you. I, I think strategically, we need to stay with the school board. We need to get that done, and then we drop back to the county council, and hopefully it should align it up. So.
And they said, their biggest concern, they don't want to spend one hour.
Yep.
They're basically supportive of it. They don't want to waste any time, energy. They don't have the time and energy or money to deal with constituents that don't understand them.
Whatever goes out there.
Well, I have to be on my website, that's the label, and really refer people, hey, I answered your questions. Go to this site, and that looks like. Go to this city official, go here, and I'll answer your questions.
All right, next one is Street Impact Fee Fund Forty-six. This is a fund that accounts for the restricted revenue of street impacts. Uh, this money can only be spent on projects that are included in the street capital facilities plan. Uh, again, we anticipate bringing the reserves down because of the number of capital projects. So by year-end, reserves will be about one hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Next is the Park Impact Fee Fund. Again, a restricted revenue source. We intend to draw these reserves down as well because we have a lot of projects, uh, down to about two hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. We do generate about one point two million annually, and so it's a very healthy source in terms of revenue. We do generate about 1.2 million annually and so it's a very healthy source in terms of revenue for our parks projects there. That's going to be a Jeremy question. I'm not sure if, if the columbariums or the admin building would fall fight under the impact fee statute. Yeah.
But that might be a way for us to be able to get the building built and not have to scale it down.
Actually.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You scale it down, it probably won't fall.
Yeah. Yep. Yep, great questions. So next one is fund 48, the transportation fund. This utilizes highway option sales tax collected via sales of fuel within city limits. Again, we're actually, actually on this one, we're looking at increasing the projected balance fiscal year 25 to $2 million. We have four capital projects budgeted and this fund also includes debt service for the roads bond that we issued last year. Class C road funds, this is funds that are generated by mile of road that we have. We have to update these reports frequently to make sure that we're getting the maximum revenues. I apologize, it's bleeding over for some reason, these numbers, but we have a beginning balance of 1.4 million and we expect to end the year with a balance of 1.5 million. Fund 61, this is the fund that Sarah talked about earlier where we are housing, for example, fleet in its own true internal service fund, where we have a fee that's charged to the funds that are benefited by that service. We have a beginning unaudited balance of 852,000 and expect that to decrease to about 351,000 by years. And as I mentioned, the revenue is derived by internal service charges and they both totaled at 1.8 million dollars.
So given that we're not putting in that million plus, right, in this year's budget, how far is that going to put us in the plan that we're going to do?
We are budgeting 1.85 million new revenue in.
But where is it coming from? Because I don't see any individual department.
You should see it, so it's going to not hit every single department, but you'll see it in definitely all the enterprise funds, airport, all the waters. You'll probably see it in parks, police. And some of it is just, it kind of makes up three, the revenue. It's, we, we charge them for lease payments. So that's just an in and out, like the lease payment is going to get paid by the internal. So we charge them a lease payment and we make the lease payment. It, it's not meant to like grow the fund. Part of it is to cover current year operating. And then the other, the third part that should grow the fund over years is the equipment replacement charge.
Yeah, that's.
Yep. So if you, like.
It's in the budget book, not in the.
Yeah, it should be in all the water funds. I'll double check that, but it should be on the water funds and then specific government funds.
I was just more worried about the IT, the IT reimbursement, even though we're using the software.
Oh yeah, so this fund won't cover, this has, this is just fleet and equipment.
Right.
Yeah.
Are we going to be the one who are considering replacements?
No, I don't think so. That, yeah, and Amper could speak more. He, he's the one that kind of controls that. Yeah. Yep, yep.
All right, we're going to shift from government funds and ju- jump into the enterprise type funds. These are intended to operate like a business. And, and of course, I, I mentioned earlier that the central Heber water and sewer sector project will be in year three of four and you'll see these costs in your water enterprise fund, your sewer enterprise fund, as well as your PI enterprise fund. So I'm going to let Sarah talk about the Zions bank utility rate study recommendation.
I think the last rate study was done in 2021. So with all the inflation, you know, costs and inflation and salaries and all of those things, we just thought it was time to just to relook at our utility rate. So our utility rate, so Zion's looked at four themes. Growth projections and connections, growth projections and operating expenses. They tended to use three to 5% depending on the fund. They looked at our debt service payments and then our future capital project needs. And they also wanted to minimize or prevent the need for additional bonding if possible. They wanted to target acceptable debt coverage ratios and they wanted to target acceptable cash on hand. So they, they took those considerations and those goals and they came up with a suggested, an updated suggested rate increase. So we are, we do already have in place like baked in rate increases. This just fine tunes them to what our current needs are now. Let's start with the good news. So the sewer fund, sewer fund actually is, so the, the blue is what's baked in right now. We are proposing the new rates of instead of 20, 18, 18, 10, 9, 8, 7, right? So that, that's going to bring those rates down a bit. Also, the PI fund, you know, across the board, we were going to have a year over year increase of 3.5. Zion suggests we can get it, we can get it done with two 5% increases and then drop off and keep those rates steady. Stormwater fund also, it looks, it looks like they're going to come down or maybe even just stay flat. It just maybe the years that they go up and down have been adjusted a little bit based on our timing of projects. The real, the real kind of hit is the water fund. We've got to increase those funds. I don't know if we have a choice of whether to, to increase those funds or not. If we do not, we run out of cash and we can't cover operating expenses. That's kind of the black and white of it. So these are the projected increases to, again, to minimize or prevent the need for bonding, to keep our debt ratios and to make sure our cash, acceptable cash on hand levels in a nutshell.
All percentage of 2025 to the water fund, what does the 5% mean versus the 12%?
So the blue is what's already baked in. That's our current rate increases. So if we do nothing, your rates will go up in the water fund, 5, 4, 4, 4 over the years. The new suggested rates, you're going to go up 12, 12, 12, 12 year after year. Yes. Mm-hmm, this is new. This is hot off the presses. Yeah, and I wish I had, and we can maybe bring this number back on the seventh, is I wish we had the total dollar because, because rates can look scarier than actual dollars. I don't, I think the actual dollar increase is a little more digestible.
Well, this basically says it five years.
It's mine, yeah. Just the, yeah, the water fund.
But I, well, if we need the money, we need the money. I mean.
Well, and, and Russ can attest, like, these are not nice to have improvements, right? Like this is our water infrastructure. This is not parks and statues and those things that, you know, this is our water infrastructure and it's, this is what we have.
And we've been way behind the ball.
So I understand that as, as Tony accurately indicated, we did the initial study five years ago, but a lot has happened in five years. You've had the slide chain issue. You've had the record inflation and that's why we updated the study and that's why these numbers have changed a bit because of the change in our operating environment.
The monthly water fee is roughly $30 a month. You add $12 to that, you're adding $3 a month or something like that. $12 a year, so you have $3 a month.
We will show you the dollar tax.
Overall, with the adjustments. Overall, with the adjustments to all of the fees, you know, you're looking at impact residents. I think we're about, it's just distributing rentals increases.
That's, that's great. Yeah, it'd be useful to see how that falls since it's a way of dropping rejected house. Because I think that's certainly, you know, just sitting in the model of something that's.
We'll have that for you.
That's a screenshot that's going to be in the news article, right, is the projection.
Grace is very balanced in her reporting, so. Any questions on this or we move on? Hey. No, go cry in a baseball. All right, next we have fund 51. This is the culinary water operating fund. This is the fund we just talked about. We, we have some, actually it was a capital fund, right? It's not the water operating fund. We'll get there in just a moment. So this fund has a beginning fund balance of 818, but notice it's drawn down to $3,000. That's part of why the rate increase is going up. And we'll remark additional data on May 7th on the rate study. This is the one that we've got to get our hands around still. We have some internal, sort of want internal posting or some internal research that we've got to do. This is showing a deficit of $875,000. I personally don't believe that's accurate, but we've got to do some research. The reason we don't believe, I don't believe that's accurate is because recall, we had $5 million in ARPA money and we also anticipated using about 1.7 million dollars from water impact fees. We just have to go back and figure out whether those were properly allocated to this project. I think that number will change once we do that research. Okay? Next is the colony water impact fee fund. This, this is a very strong fund. It's got 4.8 million dollars beginning fund balance, but end the year at about 4.3 million dollars. The wastewater operating fund, fund 52. This is essentially the, the second major enterprise fund, has a beginning unaudited balance of 24,000 and that will increase to 74,000. And this of course includes the rates which we just talked about. In fact, all the four enterprise funds include the rates which we just talked about. Fund 67 is the wastewater capital project. This is also a very strong fund. It has a current balance of 8.4. Again, that's the money we already issued for bonds to complete the east side replacement of the water sewer lines and that's going to be drawn down to complete that project in fiscal year 25. The wastewater impact fee fund 57, also a very strong fund. It starts the year at 2.5 and ends the year about 2.4. We have stormwater operating fund 54, 30 assisted fund, starts the year off at 595, ends at 517. The stormwater capital project fund 68. This is a smaller fund, bear in mind, and starts at 11, about 12,000, ends the year about 76. Pressurized irrigation fund, fund 55, is going to grow its fund balance to 155, 387. Pressurized irrigation capital fund, we're going to begin drawing down those funds in order to complete the project on the east side of town that was anticipated and expected. Pressurized irrigation impact fund will draw the reserves down to 154, 713 at year's end. The North Village impact fees, this is the new fund we talked about. That's why its balances are small. We have $218,000 and going to grow that to 637. Perpetual care fund, this is a fund dedicated to perpetual care of the city cemetery. We don't have any program outflows, but we do expect that fund balance to grow by about $60,000, taking over the $100,000 mark. And the reason this fund exists is once we essentially build out, I can use that term at the cemetery, and there's no more revenue coming in, this is the endowment fund to keep the cemetery maintained perpetually. The debt service fund, this is where we make the debt service payments. We have funds transferred in to make the debt service payments. So I would not expect the fund balances to change from beginning to end of year. Let me pause there. Those are your 25 funds. Any questions?
Sort of. Toward the beginning, a lot of those funds are going down. I understand for this year, trust the numbers for this year. But if we expect or think that sales tax revenues will continue to drop, should we be doing, should we take more of that impetus or, or something into this year's budget? Be even fiscally tighter so that those budgets don't get so low? Because at least the first five or six, you know, is effectively depleting the fund completely. I'm just curious of like, do we think that's overall a risky situation where we're at? Like, do we feel, obviously these numbers are good and they're, and they're what you have and that's what we're presenting? Not, not showing a lack of trust in staff at all, so much as saying, should we feel that this is a risky situation? Or should we feel that this is like good to go? We feel this is going to be, this is going to prepare us well for the future.
So are, are you speaking about the enterprise, the ones that we, so a couple of things. Sales tax doesn't hit enterprise funds, so we can't do much with that. The rate increases look specifically at can we, will the rate increases cover operating expenses? So we should feel confident that we won't have that issue. And they also take into like debt and capital funds. It's all baked in there. So, but to your point, should we be careful and frugal? Yes, always, for sure. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, so careful and frugal is perfect. Yep, I guess the better worry way for me to word it, and I'm sorry, I stumbled over that. The ones that have been drawn down so much, are we good with that? Like, is that a risky situation that puts us for next year? Or should we be drawing in half of that? And should we be carrying more pressure from you to come back and say you, you need to figure out more ways to cut? These shouldn't be hit this hard.
So let me take a shot at that. So the enterprise funds operate very differently than a general fund type fund. We talked about the general funds, largest revenue source being sales tax, which is very volatile, right? When it comes to water, sewer, PI and stormwater, there's a lot less risk in those revenue sources. For example, on sewer, it's pretty much a fixed amount based upon your connection. Water, there is a variable there, water usage, but the rates are set up in a way where the, the fixed costs are included, what's called a base and the variable costs are included with your variable rate portion that you, that fluctuates in the summer based on how much you water your lawn and so forth. And so some have said, well, if, if we have a very wet year, you'll sell less water. That is true, but I think we've established that fund in a way where there is little risk because we have all the fixed costs covered in the base of that rate. And so it doesn't matter how much water you use, it'll still cover that fixed cost. So I don't believe there's as much risk. But understand that the, the fund balances that we're drawing down are being drawn down purposely based upon these huge capital projects we've done the last two or three years. The Heber City has never done as many capital projects that we've done the last three years. It is an absolutely a record across the board. And so I would not be too concerned other than the operating funds in the, the enterprise funds. We believe that these rates should be sufficient enough to manage that. And again, this is not a surprise. We did this rate analysis five years, recognizing we need to have some significant rate increases because council.
We've updated the analysis based on the last couple of years relations by chain issues. And so these are the rates necessary to get us through this.
That is not a surprise. We did rate study initially five years ago. We've simply updated it and this is the game plan that we've got to stick to.
One question, I'm not clear, sorry, I might have missed this. So you showed the, the rates we've had for the five year study plus the higher rates that you are suggesting. Did you do the budget? plus the higher rates that you are suggesting. Did you do the budgets in the enterprise operating funds based on the higher rates? Or the higher rates?
The new rates presented by.
But then we still have a deficit.
All the rates are higher.
Just in water.
Yes.
Yes, but, but like, yeah, that, we're, we're digging in on the deficit. We just haven't had time to really dig into it. We think it might just be an issue where some revenue was coded. We're, we're not confident in that.
Okay, because I'm concerned about.
Oh, I am too. Yeah, but that is not the final number. Yeah.
Okay, well, and you think you can bring that back to us in May? Okay, well, that's a lot. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and just, and, and I will have this number for you, but Zion did provide, and they just kind of determined what an average water user looks like. And they said it may go from about ninety six dollars, like today, to a hundred and forty seven dollars in twenty twenty nine. So over one, two, three, over five years, ninety six to a hundred and forty six. That feels a little more.
It feels better than it being one year, sure.
Yeah, yeah, over five years, five years, twenty twenty nine, having that. But I, I will provide, it, it is really just kind of an average, based on, you know, averages of averages. Other people will some, will experience something different.
I was just, when I, when I first saw that deficit, I was thinking, oh my, are people using?
I, I, I'm going to show you the actual dollar amount per household. Because you look at this, the sewer fund, for example, the old rate was to be a twenty percent increase in twenty five. It's actually going to be a ten percent, half. If you look at the water, it was to be a five percent increase and we're going to twelve. And so it's less than half up. So I, I bet you that based up on the old rate analysis, you're about even probably, but we'll show you those numbers on May seventh.
Those increases were already approved by the council when we talked about doing that project. That information was presented that that increase was going to happen over the next five years. So I don't think that this is anything different than what per households. I mean, it might be, it might vary a little bit, but it's what was approved. The other thing I wanted to just say to, to Aaron's questions is those, those funds are showing, you know, our, our, the water, sewer and pressurized irrigation funds are showing huge outflows. But those outflows are, we, we have a funding package. We went out, we got loans and grants. And so as we're spending that money out, it's the money that we planned to spend and it's not going to continue to come in after the project's over. But right now it is, it is what we planned for that project.
Glad Russ made that point. He, he does this better than I do. These water rate, water rates were going up. They are, they're always going up. They just may be going up in a slightly different way. So we're not saying, hey, rates were going to be flat and suddenly we're, no, they were already going up. So I don't, I couldn't provide you like, what twenty twenty nine would look like under the current plan. And like, I don't have that comparison, but to be clear, water rates were already approved to go up. They're just going up in a different way now.
Well, some of, half of it was, it seems, but that's really often.
We, we will show you on the seventh, dollar for dollar, what the differences are between the old rate study and what the new rate study is. And I bet you it's going to be about the same.
This needs to be something that I think that the citizens need to have an understanding of. It's kind of a sticker, even if it's five dollars for the year, or you bet, I see that chart. We need to be able to make sure that citizens have that information readily available. Hey, by the way, this month, your prices will increase such and such. Here's the percentage, whether it's percentage price. I know that sounds like a lot of work for us, for the staff and so forth. It, it benefits us in the long run because it becomes less of discussion point, negative discussion point from the citizens where they're probably saying, why are you guys increasing this? Why are my, why are my bills so much higher than they were a month ago? I think we need to give them that. So we're, yeah, disability, something that's saying, here it comes, here's what you could expect, here's why we're doing it, here what, here's what needs to happen. We're, we're always going to have individuals who are frustrated and, and everything else, but we need to understand that citizens are seeing it behind their eyes. They're not seeing it as, they're seeing it as, oh, it's the growth. You guys are doing this, it grew too fast, and now we're having great. They're not seeing that this is happening across the country or across the state or whatever.
Yes.
I think that when we do. We need to make sure that as far as providing that to citizens, they need to have a place, here's why, or leave a question. So why is your rate only so high? If you click on it and.
Yep, and I go, I mean, the P I O on that. You allow the budget to tell probably the second meeting, do you request how it'll appear?
You also have a public hearing on the budget in your first meeting in June.
It's just money. They, they don't get all the, I spoke about. You, you're different brains, you know? You, you put this together and I sit there going, oh, okay, but all I see are dollars.
No question. I, I walk down the cereal aisle at the store and I pay nine bucks for a box of cereal. It's ridiculous.
I, this is Scott. I've got something to say too about the price increases. It really needs to be educated that they've been underpaying for the past fifty years also. I mean, we've been way underpaying what needed to be paid in to keep things going and running and.
And I understand that, and it's all giving, it's all giving well because we, we, that I'm saying for the citizens, they need to understand.
Better associated national, bro trends and stuff like that.
Would the rate increases go on to the plan? Okay, that only gives us a few months to get this out there, especially if the council seems to be going forward with it. Because we will need to win the budget suspension.
Yvonne, can you hear me?
Scott?
I can't hear who's talking, but I had one more thing to say.
Go ahead.
I think it'd be really educational, interesting to see what standard water costs are for a resident in like cities. Because I think we're still low.
Can you do a comparison?
Yeah, like a comparison, for sure.
I have an anecdote. I live in Park City. My water rates were a lot a bit higher. Just as an anecdote.
All right.
I'm just saying that when we. Already shared with us, there is no way that we can't increase at this, because of the operating expenses, influence, whatever. And it's hard, like I said, it's a hard pill for individuals who are on those, you know? Just to let you know, I have a conversation. Who's a single mother, and she was so frustrated, and all she said to me was, why won't you guys lower our, I can't even get an apartment that my daughter and I can live in, and I'm working three jobs. I can't be attending to my, I mean, she was just going off, she was so frustrated by how expensive everything is in our.
Yes, by a thousand cuts.
Where do I go? I'm just an average, single mom just trying to make ends. Those are the individuals I'm talking about. We can't ignore, we know what, but they don't. And they need to have that to be able to plan for it, to understand why it's happening. And it's our responsibility, it really is our responsibility.
I agree.
That said, super glad you guys are thinking about it, bringing it to us in advance, so we don't have a problem. And it's just.
Yep.
Yep. I think the P I O can do a great job with it. I don't think it's got to be overly complex so much as, this is coming. This is coming, this is why.
We, we've got, we've got the study, we've got the number. Russ, correct me if I get this wrong, but when we were seeking a loan for the water fund for the central Heber project, they would not allow us, they would not allow us to have a lower interest rate or a grant because our water rates comparatively were some of the lowest in the area.
Can't hear you, Russ.
Because I'm a quiet talker. Scott, can you hear me now?
Can hear you now, thank you.
So anyway, Division of Drinking Water and Division of Water Quality, when you ask for funding to help pay for a capital project, they have criteria that you have to meet in order to qualify for grant funding. The, I can't remember which is which. I think the water is, has to, has to be higher than one point seven five percent of the month of the, well, it's annual average, average median income. You break it down into month, we're not even close. That's like seventy five to eighty dollars a month per customer. We're not even close. We couldn't come close to qualifying for grants under that. The sewer was the same. And we got a good funding package from C I B, and then we went out to the private market for it. But I, I think the message is being missed. I mean, we, we did our best to, to project what the expenses were going to be in each one of those funds. And we projected rates increases to pay for the project. We haven't really changed the overall rate increase per customer. What we've done is refine it as we've moved forward and saw those project expenses. And we're showing, I mean, per, per what has been approved already, if the city, I mean, the city council could, could increase sewer at twenty percent. And you could follow those other increases and say, we also have to increase water. That's not what you're doing. You're coming in and you're saying, we have better information. We need to adjust these increases over the, over the different funds and the overall impact is minuscule. So I think it's a matter of messaging to the public. I think what we're trying to do is be good stewards and, and do a good job.
All right, we're down the home stretch. This is part three, capital improvement program. I'm going to fly through this section. Essentially for Sid and Aaron's benefits, the three criteria that's got to be met in order for an item to be classified as capital project. One is that it's got to have a value greater than five thousand dollars, results in the creation of a fixed capital asset. It must have a life greater than a single year. It must be those three classified as a, as a capital project. We utilize multiple funds to fund the capital projects from Fund ten all the way down to Fund sixty nine. And so a lot of resources are brought to bear. And what I'm going to show you is that total capital budgeted is about thirty four million dollars at fiscal year twenty five. Bit smaller than fiscal year twenty four because Russ has been diligent winding down some of those large projects like the citywide road maintenance, section B of the Ushun bypass. And as we start winding down the central Heber water and sewer line replacement, that number will continue to get smaller. And so we have for you a spreadsheet, thank you Sarah, that details by fund, which is listed across the top, the number of capital projects that we have. So you can see the capital project listed here on the left. You can see the value and what fund it's under on the right. And so this is again, just some additional information for you to better understand the capital projects, what fund they're in, how much they cost and what category we consider them. Okay. If you're also interested in getting on ClearGov, ClearGov provides detailed information on each project that staffed and required to fill out, such as the detail that Sarah gave you when we kicked off the meeting tonight. And so that essentially completes my presentation for budget workshop number one. I've got a list of about twelve items that we will follow up on, be prepared to talk about at your budget workshop number two, which will be on Wednesday, May, sorry, Tuesday, May seventh. So let me pause, turn the time over to you. This is your budget workshop. Questions, concerns, thoughts?
I went back and looked. All of the general fund departments have zero on their internal service funds projected for twenty twenty five. But the enterprise funds do, of course, like you said, Sarah. So what I'm concerned about when zero is being budgeted for the, you know, internal service funds for everybody in the general fund, I feel like that's going to delay us in the future to be able to fund I T needs or vehicle needs in the, out of the general fund departments. So I, I'm sure that's on purpose. I'm sure you're trying to keep things very tight. But I am concerned about especially the computer equipment being replaced on schedule if we're funding zero for the general fund, all of those departments out of the general. Well, it's showing zero right now. I went through the list, but it's general fund. It's internal service fund, you know, there's fleet and there's I T, and I'm seeing zero, zero, zero all the way down. Now, H R has a ninety one hundred dollar offset, I T has a forty two thousand, six hundred dollar offset. I'm not quite sure what that means either, but legislative, judicial, administrative, buildings, attorney, engineering, building planning, police, you see what I mean?
Yeah, it might be hitting a different G L account. It might be hitting equipment. Yeah, it might just be hitting a different.
But then is that, is that going to go into the internal service?
Yes, yeah, yeah. So it might just be that where we're coding it might not be so clear, but I'll, I'll double check and provide, make it for you. So we, so we understand exactly who's getting charged and what's making it into.
You might want to break that out more because it looks like we're totally waiting a year, and not that we couldn't do that. But it would, to me, then delay future needs.
It might just be like a coding, like a, a convention and where it's getting coded this year as in previous years.
Anyone else?
One more quick question. I was concerned about the planning department will budget up to thirty three thousand from five thousand, seven hundred. I didn't know what that was. Didn't know about the police having their professional services up to almost a hundred thousand more over last year. Not that these are bad things, I'm just wondering with the large increases.
Absolutely.
And then, let's see, you're cutting the discretionary fund budget from sixty thousand down to forty thousand. Is that amenable to the amount of requests that we've had lately?
That, and because you have that grant program in the, in the tap tax.
I was thinking that too, and that's good, but you know, it may not fund all the requests that come in. Okay. And then, let's see. Oh, and you didn't put any of the business license fee increases into this budget.
I, I did a basic ten percent increase to try to grab some of it, but no, none of the actual.
Okay, well, that, that'll be interesting to see how that plays out. Okay, I'm done. Anybody else?
Great questions, thank you. Yes.
I didn't hear that question.
One second.
I'm just curious, I mean, I mean, we've, we've got two and a half million dollars in the general capital improvements fund allocated for the cemetery administration building, but we haven't really decided. That's not enough to do it. So that's kind of an unknown right now. Any ideas on, are we still trying to formulate that?
Mark has met with all of the general contractors who submitted a bid for the project. He met with the low bid, who, who's the one we're obligated to work with, and they had a number of fairly interesting ideas to bring the cost down by about a million. Is that about right?
I mean, the architect and engineer, there's different ways to do it.
Yeah, is it based on just materials or different?
It's based on materials. I mean, the foundation was done with foam blocks, which is like double.
Yeah.
I got a proposal from the second low bid of things that they could say. And I haven't read through it completely, but just looking at the numbers, they've dropped it about a million. I don't think we're going to get down to the two point five, but I think we can come down significantly from where we're at.
Basically, a million out, basically.
Our meeting with the architect who designed the. Our meeting with the architect who designed the Public Works building tomorrow to get their ideas. I'm not an architect, so I want to get another architect that can help us through this and see if they have some other ideas. But if we can't cover that delta, the two point five million budget we've got, we'll come back to the recommendation of maybe building a portion of it. Yeah, we don't know yet.
Or doing the impact fee study.
Maybe, maybe.
Give alternatives. For example, the roof, they had a special cut cedar roof. One of the alternatives is, let's go with the metal roof versus the, the special cut cedar roof. The building materials are, are made for the deep south in a moist area where termites are a problem. We live in a desert, is what they said. Let's, let's just go with the standard. One of the options that was brought up in the city council meeting is, it's, let's put the footings down, build one column barium, put the footings down, and then when we, we get close to selling out the first one, let's build the second one, phasing it. Matt had an idea of maybe just building the column bearings. It's not my favorite idea. The whole thing started because we need an office, but we got to look at all of the, all of the options. I, I think it can be done, but I don't think we can do it for the three, for the two point five.
But I, I think we need to not compromise the aesthetics and the use of it and try to do our best to keep the intent that was presented to us.
And that, that's my goal too. We're, we're presenting a premium product and we're selling it as a premium product. And we're building a, a building for one fifty to two hundred year, years. We, we need a quality thing, but we don't have to build the whole thing at once. I.
Phasing it's a good idea, a lot of it has a small barrier, but there's, you know? It's, it's easy for me to say I don't like it, so. But, you know, my, my option would be, let's, let's try one column bearing in the office and then work in there. But I, I think Matt has a valid point. We can develop some income in the other values, but I think people can buy it if it's just a column.
Yeah, and I, I think we can get it down quite a bit once we talk to the engineers and get the architects input as well as the, the contractor, you know, the things we can do, so.
Haven't heard anything for about two minutes.
Um, Matt, talk to us about inter-fund loans. If we want to borrow money from, from one fund and use it, say, to purchase land, which is an asset, you know, trading a, a cash asset for a property, real estate asset? What, what funds are available that we could borrow from for two million dollars if we needed?
Oh, inter-fund loans is a very common practice that cities use. Typically, what you would do is adopt a resolution in a council meeting that describes the, the loan, the funds being used, how much the loan is, the terms of repayment and an interest rate. You're going to give the interest rate back to the loan that's, that, the fund that's providing the loan. The general fund would be the obvious one. You've got five and a half million dollars in there. Sarah, my mind's kind of fuzzy right now. Any other big fund balances in fund that you recall?
Borrow from impact fee funds that are, are flush.
Problem with impact fees though, is you have a state law that requires you to spend them within six years or seven years, six years. And so the problem is you can't tie that money up for more than six years and not spend it. But, but you could.
We can borrow out of the surplus.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's easy.
Yes. And you've done an inter-fund loan before. You've done it from the sewer to.
Almost any fund that had ample.
Absolutely.
We could borrow, or we could borrow a half billion from four different funds.
Totally. I may have a question, is he still?
Scott, did you have a question?
Uh, no, I wanted to move to adjourn the meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's good for me.
Thank you.
Good, good. Questions? She's your first, you know, trial run, let us know, let us, help you out.
Can we get these things that were handed out?